November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Eugene City Council meeting. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Anyone wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel twenty-one, or by following the access instructions listed for this meeting on the public, on the city's public webcast and meeting materials webpage. Tonight's meeting will include a public forum. If you wish to speak during the public forum and have not already done so, please fill out a request to speak form available on our public webcast and meeting material webpage. For those of you who are here in person, it's great to see you. And there are printed forms available at the entrance to the room. We'll accept request to speak forms until seven thirty-five. These request to speak forms will be used to generate the random order of speakers, beginning with those who are physically in the room, followed by those who are providing virtual testimony. And then we'll use those numbers to correctly enter the speakers' names into the public record. For those of you who are joining the meeting by phone and who wish to provide testimony, but are unable to complete the request to speak form, press star nine when the form is announced, and the last three digits of your phone number will be added to the speakers queue. And just as a reminder, we have a few rules of conduct. We just, we do not want you to display flags, signs, use loud or disruptive language, noise, or, or, or any engage in any conduct that obstructs the business of the council. We are seeking to create a quiet and respectful place so that everybody is, feels comfortable speaking and can be heard. And you are always welcome to wave your fingers in support. And then we encourage anyone who is not feeling well or has been in close contact with someone who's not well to join remotely rather than in person. And we do have, I believe, masks in the back of the room if you need one. So with that, I will begin with a land acknowledgement. Since time immemorial, the Kalapuea people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and of honoring native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between eighteen fifty-one and eighteen fifty-five, Kalapuea people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapuea Ilahi. Kalapuea descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronn, Community of Oregon, and the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians of Oregon. They continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. And now we have the pleasure and the honor of recognizing Veterans Day. And so we will open tonight's meeting with a pledge of allegiance. We are joined this evening by Rebecca Warden, a community service officer with the Eugene Police Department, who has also served with the Oregon National, Oregon Army National Guard for thirteen years as a medic and currently serves as a medic instructor. So I welcome Rebecca. Thank you very much for joining us. Please stand with us for the pledge if you are able to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for your service and for helping us this evening to recognize Veterans Day. And as, as, as usual, on this, on this Monday night meeting, I have a couple of proclamations to recognize important events or communities this month. And the first is Native American Heritage Month. Whereas Native American, Native American Awareness Week began in nineteen seventy-six in the United States, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by the President of the United States in nineteen ninety, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas the history and culture of our world has been significantly influenced by indigenous peoples, we honor indigenous peoples, their ancestral homes, lifeways, and recognize their contributions historically, today, and in the future of our community. We are aware that tribal peoples across the nation continue to add to all aspects of our society. Their customs and traditions are respected and celebrate, celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the nation. And whereas indigenous peoples are inheritors and practitioners of unique cultures and ways of relating to people, animals, and the environment, they have retained social, cultural, economic, and political characteristics that are distinct from those of the dominant society in which they live. And whereas the city of Eugene recognizes the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and their citizens who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation, they continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. And whereas tribes from the Eugene area, including Chaflan, Chalamala, Kalap, Kalapuea, and Malala peoples ceded their lands to the United States and signed on to the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuea et cetera treaty, in eighteen fifty-five. The tribal peoples were then removed to the Grand Ronn Reservation in eighteen fifty-six. Many of these peoples are now citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronn and the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians. And whereas in honor of Native American Heritage Month, the city of Eugene supports the truth-telling of native histories and is dedicated to actively listening, learning, building trust, and collaborating with local tribal nations and indigenous communities, and committed to working with tribal nations and indigenous communities to uplift traditional rights, unique tribal histories, and indigenous cultural traditions. Now, therefore, I, Lucy Viness, Mayor of the City of Eugene, Oregon, do hereby proclaim November two thousand and twenty-three to be Native American Heritage Month in Eugene and encourage all community members to recognize and support the history, cultures, and sovereignty of indigenous peoples in Oregon and around the globe. And the second proclamation is in recognition of the Transgender Day of Remembrance. Whereas transgender day of remembrance honors the lives that were lost in the past year to anti-transgender violence, violence born of ignorance and prejudice. And whereas the federal government has recognized transgender day of remembrance on the twentieth day of November. And whereas transgender and gender diverse people contribute greatly to our community's rich diversity and prosperity. And whereas the city of Eugene has a longstanding tradition of upholding the dignity of all individuals, supporting legal equality and fair treatment for all citizens, and ensuring that acts of neglect and violence toward any segment of the population will not be tolerated. And whereas the city of Eugene reaffirms the community's commitment to ensuring diversity, social justice, equity, and mutual respect throughout our community. And whereas the city of Eugene proudly states that we support our transgender and gender diverse community members. Now, therefore, I, Lucy Viness, Mayor of the City of Eugene, Oregon, who hereby proclaim November twenty, two thousand and twenty-three to be transgender day of remembrance in Eugene, Oregon, and encourage all community members to join in this special observance, work toward eliminating discrimination on all levels, and promote understanding. Thank you all for, for your close attention, respectful attention to that. And with that, we are ready to move into our first item, which is committee reports and items of interest. So do I have a comment from councilors coming forward? If, Greg, Councilor Evans?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Mayor, I have an IGR report. So let me go, let me, let me get started on this. The IGR committee met on Wednesday, November eighth, to review the two thousand and twenty-four legislative priorities and policies. The committee unanimously approved the recommended Oregon priorities and the updated state and federal policy document. As you will remember, the November eighth council work session on open air drug use and measure one-ten, the city council passed the motion to update the policy document with the new direction to include, quote, "Eugene supports efforts to reform ballot measure one-ten," unquote. Additionally, the IGR committee added a new top priority for the two thousand and twenty-four session to secure one-time funding to provide community response to Peace Health University District closure. Both the two thousand and twenty-four Oregon priorities and the two thousand and twenty-four state and federal priority documents will come to the full city council for discussion and action at a work session currently scheduled for November twenty-seventh. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Any, any other comments or questions? Yeah, Councilor Zelenka.
Councilor Yeh and I are members of the Police Commission, which we met last week and had a pretty robust discussion on, on, on the use of video cameras around the, around the city and, and the policies around that. And part of what the Police Commission does is go in depth so that the council doesn't have to and other people don't have to, but it's a representative group that go almost word by word into the different ordinances, I mean, different rules that the Police Commission, that the Police Department has and makes recommendations about changes to the chief. So I thought it was a pretty good discussion about the cameras that we have on the guardians, which are the trail, the three trailers that we have, but also there's other cameras. Like, for instance, all of them are supposed to be posted that the series being recorded. Most of them don't have audio, but some of them do. But it was a good discussion. You want to add anything to that, Jennifer?
Oh, I think you did an excellent job. And, and the discussion will be ongoing. We didn't quite finish it, so if you're interested, tune in.
Right. Usually what happens is people make suggestions and then they bring them back and then we look at them and approve, and then the chief gets to decide.
Great. Good. Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge a couple of community leaders who have passed away recently, who have had a huge impact on their community. And the first one, since we have both read a land acknowledgement and then honored native peoples, is Doc Slider, who is the Chair of the CT Kuusi, the Confederated Tribes of the Kuus, Lower Umquah, and Sayusla. Been a very important figure for the, for tribal leadership and, and, and we were in the beginning of a, of a new relationship with that tribal government. So his loss is, is, is a hard one. Evelyn Anderton, who was the Executive Director of Women's Space for many, many years, and then very active on homelessness issues, volunteered at the First Christian Church as a sort of reception desk for people who were looking for services. She, I think I'm, I'm a little late in commenting on this because I think she died in late August or early September. And then just in the last couple week or so, Priscilla Gould passed away. And Priscilla Gould served as the Executive Director of United Way for twenty-two years and, and spent her entire career at United Way, more or less, and really was incredibly important force for meeting the, the, the service needs of this community broadly. She was, she was an important humanitarian in our community. So it's a sort of a passing of an era for these, for these three people who have been very, very important community builders. Yeah. Yeah. Counselor, go forward.
Couple other giants in our community who we recently lost, I wanted to add to that list. Julie Whitmore.
Yes.
Eugene Public Library Foundation, a force to be reckoned with and an amazing writer and voracious reader and great friend, Frank Fignola. Eugene Water Electric Board. Frank and Julie are missed as well. I want to give a quick update if I could, Mayor.
Okay.
I spent the weekend, Saturday, at a Veterans Day celebration at the state Capitol. I would echo my thanks and gratitude to persons across this country and across our globe who serve these United States in uniform. Thank you to our veterans. The Human Rights Commission met today and HRC staff announced that there's an opening for a homeless and community engagement manager with Lane County. El Rapa, the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency, met last week, and El Rapa is seeking a new executive director. And in between meetings today, because there was a multitude of, of Monday meetings that I attended, I tuned into KLCC and heard NPR reports, some of the most horrific accounts of hospitals being bombarded and bombed. And I would just ask that if you also heard said accounts or are moved and shaken to your core and share a visceral reaction, please consider donating to the American Red Cross. The American Red Cross transcends borders. And if you do give to our local Red Cross chapter, please indicate Middle East conflict in your online or physical contribution to the American Red Cross. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other, any other comments? Okay, appreciate all of that. And with that, we are ready for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the items on Consent Calendar one.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And now we will go on to our first item of, of first action, an ordinance amending the Eugene Springfield Metropolitan Area General Man, General Plan, and I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the Eugene City Council is scheduled to consider an act on a metro plan amendment that would change the land use designation on the properties from campus industrial to light medium industrial. This amendment is necessary for the applicant's request to change the zoning of the property from E-one campus employment to I-two light medium industrial. These changes are requested for two properties on the west side of Eugene, between South Owen Loop and West Eleventh Avenue. Applicant has requested these changes to facilitate the development of a new facility for Centus Corporation.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? All right, I'm going to put this motion on the table.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Move to adopt an ordinance amending the Eugene Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan diagram to redesignate the property identified as assessor's map one-seven dash zero-four dash three-two dash one-four, tax lot zero-zero-two-hundred, and assessor's map one-seven dash zero-four dash three-two dash one-three, tax lot zero-zero-six-hundred, from campus industrial to light medium industrial, and rezone the property from E-one campus employment to one-two light medium industrial.
Second.
Okay, again, sorry. Any questions or comments on this one? All right, all in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That passes unanimously. Thank you. And then our next item is action and ordinance concerning climate-friendly and equitable communities parking standards. And again, I'll turn to the gentleman, to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a work session to allow the Eugene City Council to take action on an ordinance adopting climate-friendly and equitable communities, or C-FAC parking reform, land use code amendments. Three items here. The code amendments eliminate requirements for minimum number of off-street parking spaces citywide. The code amendments do not prohibit the construction of off-street parking spaces. They simply remove city requirements for off-street parking. Developers who choose to construct off-street parking will still be allowed to do so. Of the three C-FAC parking alternatives that comply with state law, elimination of off-street parking requirements is the alternative that was generally preferred by those who participated in the Eugene, in the city's public engagement related to these code amendments. Eugene Planning Commission considered this and unanimously recommended adoption of the code amendments that you have before you.
Okay, thank you. Council President, I'll turn it to you to put a motion on.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt an ordinance concerning climate-friendly and equitable communities parking standards included as attachment aid to this AIS.
Second.
All right, are there questions or comments on this? Counselor Crowes and then Counselor?
Whatever your name is.
Whatever your name is. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. There are certainly many good things in the C-FAC legislation. My personal frustration is I feel we are eroding home rule and our local jurisdiction's ability to designate how we conduct business and how we manage our community. This is just another step in a series of steps the state's made that basically is taking the decision-making ability away from our Oregon cities. And so I, I just want to raise my concern about that and my objection to this being approached as a state, one size fits all. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to agree entirely with my colleague, Counselor Groves. And city, city attorney, I, I don't know how to ask this question because I'm not a lawyer and I don't play one on TV. But the question of home rule authority and, and I know that the authority behind DLC's work here was all found in existing statutory authority. Am I correct? Right? This wasn't a, this wasn't an executive order by the governor. This was, am I correct?
Correct, but I'm going to let Lauren speak.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Lauren Summers, Assistant City Attorney. The impetus for the C-FAC rules was the governor's executive order. But in order to adopt them, the Land Conservation and Development Commission had to point to the statutory authority underlying each of the rules.
Has that ever been litigated from the state Supreme Court levels alongside our, our home rule authority?
Well, Counselor Clark, as you are aware, there are a number of cities that are litigating the C-FAC rules currently. They're at the Court of Appeals and they've had oral argument, but the Court of Appeals has not issued their decision on the C-FAC rules at this point. So when that comes out, we don't know exactly when. Certainly we'll keep the council informed. It could be appealed to the Supreme Court.
Was that the basis on which the suit went forward with the other?
There were a number of bases, including procedural issues and statutory authority.
I wanted us to join that in the first place. I think it's wise. As our, our city's council has recommended that we wait and watch. And, but I'm, it makes me cranky right now because I want to fight over this. I think they're, I think they're wrong. I am not in favor either. And I hope that administratively, although I, this is the manager's purview and I don't get the opportunity to make a motion and, and make the manager do something like this in case of a majority. But I hope we would consider the role that Springfield has taken with their planning commission to say they're going to actively provide recommendations of what they would normally have procedurally done and recommended prior to C-FAC when they, when it comes to permitting something being built, especially with commercial buildings. So I, I, I hope we consider that down our side of the highway as well. Thank you very much.
Counselor Zelenka.
The one part of this was that I had the biggest problem with was the reduced parking requirements. This is a DC, DLCD rule or LCDC rule put into place that gave us several options, none of which were do nothing, correct? So we had, we have to enact one of the options that were presented to us.
Counselor, Counselor Zelenka, that is correct. Yes.
Right. So even if we liked it or didn't like it, we didn't have that option.
If the city council does not take action on one of the three options, then the state law will apply directly starting in January.
Right. That was my next question. What happens if we do nothing? Which is, it goes into effect by itself. Okay. With, I, I don't particularly like that part of the rule either. I think it's a mistake and will have a lot of unintended consequences for neighborhoods and, and, and especially low-income people. And, but don't have a choice to vote no. So I will reluctantly support the motion.
Okay, any other comments? Lots of comments. Okay. Counselor Rose and then Counselor Clark again. Okay.
I will say, Counselors Lincoln, I think we always have the option of voting no. It's, it may not get us anywhere. I've been wrestling with this, well, for a while now, and especially today, just again, because I'm not, I'm not against what they're trying to do. It's just how they're doing it. And for me, the how is every bit as important as the what and the why. And I, I would love to vote no and register a complaint. But at this point, I, I just feel like we're between a rock and a hard space that we shouldn't be put in.
Okay, Counselor Clark.
When he said, I would say we always have the opportunity to vote no, and I will. And I, the, the what comes next in a case like this, because I agree with what you said, we don't necessarily know the what comes next other than what the, what DLCD has suggested the state will mandate from there. And that sounds like we would then have to engage in our own lawsuit, which is an interesting question for me. So.
Counselor Yeh.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Clark, I think I'm going to channel my inner Counselor Taylor in telling you and voting, voting no. I'm wholly displeased with, as Counselor Groves indicated, the, the home rule piece. But the, this flies in the face of the thoughtful deliberative debate we had just a year and a half ago around off-street parking as it relates to MX and frequent transit lines. And those are issues that crop up time and again in the South Hills. So if this fails and we have to go back to the drawing board before that January deadline, I'm open to that. I don't suspect it will fail, but my vote will be a protest vote.
Okay, yes.
Remind us what happens if we voted no, like more specific, not like deep, but like high level.
Thank you, Counselor Yeh. I'll also turn to Reed Burner, who's the lead staff on this project and is here virtually. I think he can do a better job of describing, but I'll take a quick pass at it, which is that the outcome essentially would be the same that if the council doesn't pass its own ordinance before the end of the calendar year, then the city will be prohibited from requiring off-street parking starting January first. However, the ordinance that is before you is something that city staff conducted public engagement on that is, has, staff have done a lot of work to try to kind of take the state law requirements and import them into our land use code in a way that works and fits with the city's processes and land use processes. And so if the ordinance is not adopted, although the outcome might be similar, we will lose that work that staff have done to create an ordinance that fits as well as it can locally within the bounds of the state requirements. I said a lot, Reed. I'm sorry.
No, Lauren did a great job addressing most of the differences if we don't act. One additional one I will point out is that when we brought the ordinance to the planning commission, based on the recommendations, we added an additional requirement to have an ADA van accessible parking space for certain types of developments. And that was important to the planning commission. And that's something that we added to the land use code amendments that would be lost if we didn't act in passing ordinance because the state law allows us to add that requirement, but it doesn't have it in their rules specifically. So it would just, we wouldn't be able to enforce that. And some of the other specific changes that we made to mix or, or to basically match up what those state rules are with our local code would be lost. So we'd be just influencing, or, sorry, not influencing. I'm interpreting the state code and trying to apply that in local situations, which would create some new challenges.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I, I thought I remembered that there were a few things that were different. So in light of that, I, I'm going to support the motion because, you know, at the end of the day, maybe I don't like everything. I certainly don't like cookie cutter solutions, but I want the best solution we can get for our city. And staff have worked hard to provide that for us, and so I'm going to support it.
Thank you. And Alan, I had you for another round here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, if a no vote meant no action would occur, that would be one thing. But that's not what would happen. Our choices are either have a Eugene ordinance that has local input or, or have the DLCD. or, or have the DLCD, LCDC ordinance code put into place without any local input, without any modifications. And if that's, it's a binary choice. You can always have your protest vote against that, but that's the binary choice in front of us. It, given that, and, uh, and, and, uh, I would so suggest the councillors vote that our local ordinance that we put in place, that our staff has worked hard on, that people have put input into, that reflects the modest changes that we can have that for our, our local ordinance is a much better outcome than having one that gets thrust on us. That's a cookie cutter one from, from the state. And so for that matter, I, I, I encourage you all to vote yes. You might not like it, but those are the choi- that's the choice.
Yes, uh, thank you for that. And I would, I would just reinforce that, that, uh, the community engagement is important. You have a, you have an advisory board and a planning com- commission that went through a long process with this thoughtful process and staff. And, uh, I think you do want to make the best out of what you've got. And I see a hand up. Lydia, did you want to weigh in on this? Thank you.
Uh, just quickly to add to, um, what Lauren and Reed very articulately stated, but one of the things that's very different about these rules as compared to, say, middle housing is there actually isn't a state code. We'd actually be applying the, the rules themselves. So that just poses another layer of challenge um, for our community in terms of, um, understanding it and having to, um, kind of work with what the state has in rule form, not in actual, it's not actually codified.
It's an important point. Okay. Okay, uh, if there, if that's it for comments, uh, we have a motion on the table. So all in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four. All opposed? One, two, three. Okay, it passes four to three. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And with that, our, that part of our business is complete. We'll move on to the public forum. So as I said, we're, we're, um, we will have people randomly selected who are in person first, and then we'll go to the virtual testimony. So the public forum, forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official. And so I'll ask staff to please share the list of, of folks and announce the first speakers.
Hi, Mayor. We have thirty-two speakers signed up this evening.
Oh, well, let me then make a comment here, which is thirty-two speakers. Uh, just a reminder that the public forum is limited to ninety minutes total. So, uh, if the number of speakers approaches or exceeds the time we have allotted, um, we will cut off the last few speakers. So just a note that if you can be brief, it will make sure that, uh, people who have signed up to speak have an opportunity to speak. Okay. And I'll turn it back over to you, Cherish. Yes.
All right. If you have signed up to speak via Zoom, please take this time to ensure that your screen name in Zoom matches the first and last name you used to sign up to speak. And that goes for even if you are part of a board or commi- commission speaking. If your screen name does not match, we will not be able to allow you to speak when it is your turn. I will announce two names at a time. When you are called to speak, please state your name clearly. And for your G, for Eugene residents, your ward or neighborhood, if known, before beginning your comments. If you are announced as the next speaker and physically in the room, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please leave any bags you may have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give counsel, please place them in the council inbox basket near the podium. If you are providing virtual, virtual, virtual testimony, when it is your turn, I will announce your name and allow you to speak. Please note that your camera will not be visible. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. There is a timer at the podium, and if you are watching via Zoom, the timer should be visible. A yellow light will come on when you have fifteen seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of the two and a half minutes. Please be aware that your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Our first speaker this evening is Jer Rosemeyer, followed by Charles Arford.
Uh, my comments tonight regard the, uh, Golden Gardens Park and the proposed expansion of a sports complex at the park. Oh, uh, thank you. Yes, Jerry Rosemeyer, Ward Six. Okay. Uh, earlier in the year, uh, myself and, uh, another uh, concerned citizen who lived close to the park, uh, did a signature gathering, uh, canvas of the neighborhood right around the park, from the park to, uh, down to Barger on, including all the main streets that run into the park. Uh, and I will read the, uh, topic, the, the phrasing of the petition. Protect Golden Gardens Pond Park. Eugene Mayor and City Council. Golden Gardens Pond Park is one of the few natural areas in Bethel and is a crown jewel of the community. The site features herons, bald eagles, and the endangered western pond turtle. As the city seeks to add a large sports complex to the site, please protect the natural area by ensuring A, no plastic, uh, astroturf, and B, a five-hundred-foot buffer between the park and between the ponds and the new sports complex. Thank you, the undersigned members of the community. And I have copies of blank copies of the petition. I also have the act, or perhaps copies, but I think the real signed petitions. We gathered two hundred and twenty-five signatures in that neighborhood right adjacent to the park. Uh, and I also have a, um, a printed out list of all the people who signed the petition. And I'll just say that while, uh, some people declined to sign the petition, nobody that I talked to, those tw- two-hundred-and-twenty-five doors that we knocked on, uh, said, yes, I really want a big sports complex to be added to Golden Gardens Park. Yes, I want more traffic and more foot.
Thank you, Jerry. Your time is concluded. Our next speaker is Charles Arford, followed by David Eigel.
Chuck Arford, Ward Eight. Um, it's been a while. It's good to see everybody and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am advocating for a moratorium on the construction of new gas stations in Eugene. When I first moved to Eugene thirty-four years ago, I lived with a friend on Maple Street near Four Corners, Roosevelt and Highway Ninety-Nine, just north of the now-closed JH, JH Baxter Plant, where elevated levels of toxic dioxin chemicals have been found. My good friend lived there for forty years. The small waterway that runs parallel to Roosevelt uh, is infamous, was infamous for being the most polluted waterway in, in Eugene. And empties into Fernridge Reservoir. I don't know if it still has that designation. Also around Four Corners, we have the sponsors program, uh, that supports people with a criminal conviction, conviction history, a good program. And recently, Lane County parole and probation moved in across the street. The most recent addition, however, is the brand-new ARCO AM PM with twenty gas pumps. Across the street, we have a seven-eleven with eight more gas pumps. And just a few hundred yards up the street, a revamped mobile station with twelve more pumps. Forty pumps for Four Corners, which is one of the most polluted areas of Eugene. I was recently amazed to learn just how toxic gas stations are for the surrounding air, water and soil, and how cancers, particularly for children, cluster around them. And they are incredibly expensive to clean up. I still live in West Eugene, in the Churchill neighborhood. Not counting Four Corners, there's at least thirty gas pumps within minutes of my home. I never have to wait for gas. The Churchill area does not need new gas stations. Four Corners does not need new gas stations. And the city of Eugene does not need new gas stations. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Our next speaker is David Eigel, followed by Madison Lusk.
Uh, I'm David Eigel from Ward One. When I was last here, I stated that Jennifer Ye was to the honest presentation of history, what Lady Macbeth is to the dutiful care of house guests. Mr. Evans later commented that Lady Macbeth was one of the worst villains in history. Mr. Evans, Lady Macbeth is a figure from fiction, not history. That's what's wrong with your ilk. You constantly substitute fiction for fact. You thought it was okay to help Michael Schiltz, but his sick lies about Ordonians and to help Jennifer Ye onto the city council. I'm overjoyed tonight to report that recently, I was looking at the Lane County History Museum website. And Christmas has come early this year. Jennifer Ye's name is no longer listed as a director or any other employee of the museum. Jennifer, what tangled webs we weave when first we practice to deceive. The racing to change exhibit was comprised of one lie after another. For example, it stated that leading Eugene citizens, including clergy and by name singled out the rector of St. Mary's Episcopal Church, Frederick Jennings, were going on the, about on the streets spewing hateful rhetoric about black residents, Catholics, and Jews. Are you crazy? Seriously, are you crazy? Where do you get this stuff? Mr. Evans and Miss Ye have misused their offices and engaged in unethical activities designed to misuse public resources to spread their own racism and religious bigotry. Greg and Jennifer, it's time for you two to resign. You didn't tell the residents of your wards what you were up to at the last election, knowing that you wouldn't be re-elected if you did. And Greg, a racist and religious bigot, has no business being the VP of Equity Inclusion at Lane Community College. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker is Madison Lusk, followed by Zach Mulholland.
Hello, Council. My name is Madison Lusk. I'm here to ask you to speak out on a ceasefire in Gaza. The brutal and violent occupation and genocide that is currently happening in Palestine is unforgivable. And the United States' role in that genocide is also unforgivable. Israel is committing international crimes at a mass scale. Those include collective punishment as defined by the Geneva Convention, apartheid as defined by the Rome Statute, and genocide also defined by the Rome Statute. All of these things were signed by the US government and we agreed that we would act against them. Instead, we are funding this bombing and this killing that is happening. Um, this is an ongoing collective punishment, apartheid, and genocide of the Palestinian people. And your constituents, your people, are on the streets and they're begging for ceasefire. As our representatives, we ask that you use your voice to speak out on this issue. Uh, Council Keating, Councilman Keating, I appreciate that you spoke. I also think that we need to ask for more than a Red Cross donation. We need to ask for real action from our government. And you are our representatives in that space. We ask that you use your voice to amplify our voices and ask that this genocide ends. Will you use your platform to demand a ceasefire in Gaza? Or will you use your platform to continue to perpetuate a violence on these innocent people? Because those are the only two options that we have. You are, are representatives in this government and we need you to use your voice. You can either demand an end to this, or you can live with the blood on your hands of these Palestinian people. The choice is yours, but we will be watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Our next speaker is Zach Mulholland, followed by Matt Dompe.
Hello, uh, Mayor and Council. My name is Zach Mulholland. Beyond Toxic recently started a new petition regarding the Golden Gardens Project, uh, picking up, uh, where the community petition left off. It's very similar, uh, to have a hundred and fifty signatures just thus far. Can we go ahead and read it? Uh, Golden Gardens Park is one of the few natural areas with wildlife habitat in Bethel and is a crown jewel of the community. The site features herons, bald eagles, and the soon-to-be-protected western pond turtle. The city of Eugene is proposing a new sporting complex to meet the community's need to accommodate recreational facilities. While we re- while we support local sports and recreation, the proposal will include hat- adding a significant amount of plastic artificial turf to this highly sensitive habitat. We urge the city council and the Golden Gardens Parks Park Advisory Committee to reject proposals to use artificial turf of the sporting complex. Artificial turf is plastic grass that dis- disintegrates when exposed to sunlight and contributes to the environmental burden of microplastics in local and global environments. Microplastics are also absorbed into the blood of wildlife and people and has been linked with cancer, particularly youth who are in the goalie, goalie position. The bottom line is that installing acres of microplastics at Golden Gardens Park poses a health risk, risk to those that visit and the animals that make their home in this lovely park. We also urge the city council to establish a five-hundred-foot buffer between the sporting complex infrastructure and the ponds to, to prevent disruption to wildlife. Golden Gardens is home to the sensitive western pond turtle, a native reptile, which is up for listing as threatened under the Endangered Species Act. Young northwest pond turtles already have a hard time reaching adulthood due to increased habitat destruction and fragmentation of brightly lit sports complex. Uh, and the presence of thousands of people right next to their habitat on a regular basis will only serve to further reduce the number of young turtles reaching maturity. Uh, and I'll drop a copy of the petition and the signatures just thus far, uh, for the public record. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Zach. Our next speaker is Matt Dompe, followed by Janet Ayers.
Thank you, council members, for some time this evening. Um, Matt Dompe from Ward Five. Um, I'm the Assistant General Manager of the Eugene Emeralds. Um, so obviously I'm here to speak on that. Um, first and foremost, we really, from the Elmo, Elmore Sports Group and the Eugene Emeralds, and all the work that you guys have done from the staff to the council members to keep this project going and to continue to consider this bond measure, um, we really appreciate that truly deeply so. But I'm really here more, not so much, I want to take my Emeralds hat off and more talk about as a citizen of Eugene and as a father of two. Um, I moved here in two thousand and ten, uh, to work for the Emeralds to help open PK Park. Met my wife within the first two weeks of moving to this beautiful city. We now have two beautiful little girls, five years old and three years old. And, you know, my wife, she gets more fired up than even I do, and my livelihood is connected to this whole project. She gets fired up as a person that's lived her entire life here in Eugene, going to Civic Stadium as a kid. You know, those summer nights that she remembers, she wants to be able to continue to bring our daughters and have them experience that same thing. And I think, you know, one of the things that really just drives home when thinking about that, I mean, my wife and my two daughters, I couldn't get them to watch a World Series baseball game with me to save my life. So I really think what this illustrates, I mean, it's just, it's so much more than baseball. It's not, you know, I'm the biggest baseball nerd you're gonna meet. But it's not, I can watch baseball anytime. It's not about having baseball in our town. It's about having that place where we can all come together, that communal spot. Um, where we can have shared experiences as Eugenians, minor league baseball teams, they reflect their community. Um, and I think, you know, you guys have heard our arguments for months, years. Um, so I'm not gonna bore you with that, but I just think as a father, I would hate it if my two little girls didn't get a chance to keep going out to the ballpark every year, seeing Sluggo and the exploding whales and all, all the other silliness that we put on out there. So I appreciate the time and I, uh, appreciate your guys' support.
Thank you, Matt. Our next speaker is Janet Ayers, followed by Jerry Minahan.
Janet Ayers, Ward Seven. And first I want to thank Mike Clark for being what appeared to me, anyway, critical thinking on that CFPA. Thank you for bringing some thought into the process. Uh, Mike Evans, I want to congratulate him for acknowledging the dismal failure of Measure One Ten and the very possible, um, redo of that Measure Ten. So with those two, I'll move forward. One more piece I want to add. I live down by the Jefferson Skate Park. We just spent eight hundred thousand dollars replacing that soiled soil. We already have campers coming into that site with no enforcement. I thought I heard through the grapevine that that would not be utilized again in soiling up that eight hundred thousand dollar soil replacement. Could we please get twenty-four-seven enforcement? Because before the year is out, it'll be another zoo again. Thank you. So I'm gonna bring up two things. Uh, I'd like the city to provide visual charts for those of us in the community of two things that are key importance to the voters this season, Ms. Leach. One of which was the unhoused and how much that is costing the taxpayers per person. The number I have, and I'd like pie charts, so those visuals with our dollars and how they're being utilized on two subjects. The unhoused, which I'm addressing now, with the number, last count, I understood both sitting county is four thousand. I understand forty million. And if I've done my math right, that's about ten grand per person. And they're no better off than they were five years ago. Very disappointed because Whittaker, my neighborhood, is the Very disappointed because Whittaker, my neighborhood, is the receiving end of this problem that is just being band-aided away into oblivion. There's no correction, no fixing of it. Please fix Whittaker with that pills and the graffiti and the issues that we have. I'm hoping and praying. Uh, CRE, um, uh, multiple unit property tax.
Thank you, Janet. Your time is concluded. Our next speaker is Jerry Minahan, followed by Charlie Loeb.
Good evening, Mayor Venice, City Manager Madarian, City Council. My name is Jerry Minahan and I'm a resident of Ward Two. I'm here this evening to share a timely story with elements of both Halloween and Thanksgiving. Just over one year ago in late October, twenty twenty-two, the well-maintained property across from my home was sold. Within two months, that property transformed to a blight of illegal camping, drug use and trafficking, on-street vehicle maintenance, illegal human waste disposal, backyard barrel burning, twenty-four hour noise and light pollution, and numerous other code violations. Neighbors were scared to walk the sidewalks of their street and understandably concerned about the long-term livability of the neighborhood. Drivers passing through the neighborhood would stop their vehicles in the middle of the street and gawk at the horrendous transformation this property went through in just a couple of short months. Drug seekers and traffickers were common visitors to the house and property. Our street simply was not safe. During this period, my neighbors and I lost a lot of sleep, were constantly preoccupied and felt unsafe in our own homes. Luckily, we banded together in an attempt to seek help. From January to April, twenty twenty-three, my neighbors and I made over seventy separate complaints of code violations, parking violations, and suspected criminal activity to authorities. And earning my profound gratitude, the City of Eugene responded. The city's Code Compliance Office patiently and methodically addressed each of the many code violations, ultimately finding the owner and tenant significant sums. To address the numerous illegal parking issues, the Parking Services Team dispatched parking officers from the downtown core to my neighborhood. Our Neighborhood Association and City Councilor Keating also lent a hand to address this issue, allowing me to meet with city public safety staff and advocating to the chief of police. And finally, the Street Crimes Unit of the Eugene Police Department provided regular communication with neighbors, support, encouragement, and vigilance over the neighborhood. In conclusion, I would like to publicly and wholeheartedly thank the following City of Eugene employees. James Stock and Ken Green of the City Code Compliance Department, Wendy Hood and her team at Parking Services, Joe Kidd, and especially Officer Jeremy Green of the EPD Street Crimes Unit. After a long-suffering eviction process over the summer and remodeling of the trashed property and home in question, the property sold last week. The property is back to its charming pre-October, twenty twenty-two state, and the home is now owner-occupied. Thank you for listening, and I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving holiday ahead.
Thank you, Jerry. Our next speaker is Charlie Loeb, followed by Bob Pettit.
Hello, I'm Charlie Loeb. I'm in Counselor Keating's Ward Two. I appreciate all the work that you all do and, uh, I am a cyclist. I spend a lot of time riding around Eugene, not only through Ward Two, but more or less through all the wards here. And I really appreciate what the City of Eugene has done to try and make cycling more convenient and safe for everyone. And but there are still gaps, as I'm sure you're aware, sometimes big gaps. I have, imagine if you are in a car traveling the Belt Line toward I five and you get to Coburg Road and it just stops. And instead of merging onto I five, you get off, travel Coburg Road out to Game Farm Road before you're able to get on and go. That is often what we as cyclists encounter when we're trying to use some of the major cycling arteries. I'm gonna give a specific example because I know that Alan Hancock spoke to you about it a few weeks ago. Alder Street, beautiful cycle corridor, riverfront path, a beautiful cycle corridor. But if you're trying to cycle down Alder Street to get to the riverfront path, you hit a gap at Franklin Street and the railroad and you're forced onto sidewalks, which have in times placed me into quite a hazardous condition there. I'd really like to see that addressed. Um, I know that it's in the plans, um, to create some kind of connection there, perhaps an underpass underneath the railroad would work just fine. It's really important as one of those big gaps that makes it unsafe for cyclists to get where they want to go easily, conveniently, safely. Um, and because of where it is in connection to the new riverfront park, and I might add to the new Eugene City Hall, if you all would like people to cycle there, speaking as a cyclist, it's making these kind of connections that's really critical. So I just wanted to support what Alan had to say in previous meeting and to ask you all to pay careful attention to that going forward. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Charlie. Our next speaker is Bob Pettit, followed by Carolyn Partridge.
Thank you. My name is Bob Pettit. I am here as a very long-term, uh, citizen of Eugene and I'm, uh, living Ward Eight. First of all, I would like to say I oppose the use of artificial turf if it is necessary to build a multipurpose sports facility on the Golden Gardens land. Secondly, I'd like to make sure the city council has a hydrologist as part of the planning process to determine how and what effect the impact of building a multipurpose sports facility would have on the water table in the general area, both immediately and in the future. As water is becoming a very serious issue everywhere. I would strongly like to recommend that the city council consider involving Native Americans in the planning and review of the usage of the Golden Gardens land in conjunction with expanding the nature wildlife aspects of the land. And finally, I would like to recommend that the planning money be utilized to build and develop an educational center for expanding the cultural knowledge regarding the Native Americans from the Eugene Springfield area in conjunction with expanding the nature, wildlife, physical and educational elements of Golden Gardens. The benefits from an educational health and mental health point of view for all ages would far exceed the benefits of building a multipurpose sports facility. And I do plan to send a note, um, a paper, if you will, that I refer to as what if. Hey mom, look, what is that? That's a wonderful monarch butterfly. I'm a little girl, I'm five years old, and look what I get to see for the first time. Because Eugene will help the endangered. And the, well, the, uh,
Thank you, Bob. Your time is concluded. Our next speaker is Carolyn Partridge, followed by Richard Locke.
Hello, Mayor Venice, City Councilors and Manager McJerry. My name is Carolyn Partridge and I live in Ward Two. I'm here again because I still hold out hope that Eugene can meet its emission reduction goals for the year twenty thirty. I'm supporting a proposal that can help us toward that end, namely a ban on constructing new gasoline stations. The transportation sector is the largest source of our emissions, so it makes no sense to continue accommodating those emissions, especially by allowing new gas stations. It's clear that the fossil fuel industry has every intention of expanding their operations despite what they know about the dangers of their product. They are ramping up supply and our only defensive strategy is to decrease demand. We can do that by promoting less polluting modes of transport, such as vehicle electrification, active transportation, and ma- mass transit options. In addition to the climate warming caused by tailpipe emissions, other serious hazards are caused by the gas stations themselves. Studies have shown that over time, underground tanks leak petroleum into the surrounding soil and water. The cleanup process is very expensive and is often borne by taxpayers. Additionally, toxic vapors are leaked into surrounding air, are leaked into the surrounding air from above-ground refueling operations to such an extent that nearby residents are suffering adverse health effects. Let's act in a prudent manner and start cleaning up our endangered environment. Halting the spread of fossil fuel infrastructure is an important and necessary step. No more new gas stations. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and for your service in the community. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Our next speaker is Richard Locke, followed by Andrew Brown.
Good evening. My name is Richard Locke. I am a business owner in Ward Eight and a, um, the founder of the Eugene Business Alliance. Um, I'd like to talk tonight about um, Code of four point eight one five. And I'll start with two E. Uh, state and federal laws require the city to protect and improve the physical integrity of the water quality of the Willamette River, including all tributaries to the river. All city waterways are tributaries to the Willamette River. Establishing campsites near a waterway in um, in an area not, uh, intended for the, for that use degrades the waterway's physical integrity and water quality. And when contaminants from campsites enter the waterway poses immediate risk to public health and safety. And three F says for the Willamette River and all other open waterways, property located within one hundred feet of the top high bank and property within five feet of, of ditches, wetlands, and vegetation, storm, stormwater, uh, quality facilities or purposes of this section, top of high bank, basically saying that we've, we passed an ordinance here last year, or actually this year, and, uh, we have, uh, neglected this portion of it. I, I look around town here and I see that, um, you know, we don't have camps around the schools anymore. We don't have all the places that we said, but we're covered up in all around our waterways. So I'm talking here and now, environmental responsibility, and it appears that this city management doesn't have any. We're being covered up out in West Eugene in Ward Eight. Counselor Gross, along the Amazon Canal. Now, Mayor, you come out here and you make a, uh, a, uh, a statement to the Kalapulia. I bet you in eighteen forty, they would be appalled at how you're treating it.
The audience, that you are not to applaud. This is quiet and you can use silent support, but no shouting, no applauding. Thank you very much. I, I just asked you to respect that rule. Thank you. Yep, and we have some rules around it. Thank you. Okay.
Our next speaker this evening is Andrew Brown, followed by Stefan Struck.
Uh, good evening, council members. Thank you for your time. My name is Andrew Brown. I'm a Ward Seven resident. Uh, as a native to the City of Eugene and a young man who participated in organized youth sports, I have a duty to speak on behalf of peers that support the proposed sports bond. This bond provides solutions to Eugene's lack of safe recreation areas. It's an opportunity for increased annual revenues in the heart of our county and a ground-up solution for enriching our community. It will allow for community leaders, coaches, and parents to teach examples of good character. Certainly, there are lessons learned from your relationship with sports that, uh, remain relevant to your lives now. Consider the impact on our future leaders and society members. It will allow us to keep making memorable connections that cannot be made inside of a classroom. Consider the positive impact on families and our community. There have been policy measures in action taken that give reason for many to believe that Eugene is a city in decline. This bond is a step to reviving our city. As a leader of the Eugene Emeralds Front Office, it would be easy to identify my bias. However, I was Eugene resident, a Pop Warner football player, a graduate of North Eugene High School, and a duck first. Again, my support is for the proposed sports bond and the soul it allows our community to keep. And if brought to measure, I hope we can limit environmental impact. Thank you again for your diligence regarding this and all matters on behalf of the City of Eugene.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next speaker is Stefan, followed by Cameron Stringfield.
It's a righteous, uh, word this evening, City Council. Uh, thank you so much for taking the time to, uh, be here tonight, and it is fantastic that so many people are also sharing their opinions. It's great to not be the only one speaking. Um, I'd just like to, once again, make an acknowledgement to, uh, my cat that passed away recently. It's, uh, been a pretty rough time and I already spoke about this, but he is worth the extra time. I guarantee it. And, uh, I still remember, it was just like yesterday. I moved into my house in South University and while we were waiting for the carpets to dry, these two little cats were hanging out on the porch that had been left behind by the track team that had been living there before me. And, uh, my roommate was really excited, super excited. I told her, just don't pet those cats, but she did it anyways. And they stuck around for the full eight years and really, really worth the thousands of dollars they cost. So it was a really excellent run and they absolutely changed my life for the better in so many ways that I could not imagine through the years. Always held the fort down when I went on vacation. And, uh, really cheered up a lot of people in the neighborhood. There was so many times I'd look out the window and see another just random person, some girl just stretched out on the sidewalk, just petting the cat for hour at a time. I'd get kind of jealous. But, um, I really hope that more people can take the opportunity and the little bit of courage that it takes to have responsibility for another living thing and go to one of our fantastic shelters and adopt an animal, a cat, a dog, something alternative. And really just make the most of the holiday season and really take it close to heart that, uh, you can want the world to be a better place and don't let that stop you from making the world as great as it can be. Uh, we all do our best and thank you so much. Uh, rest in peace, little Flubbers. Amazing little dude and, uh, I'll always remember him. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stefan. Our next speaker is Cameron Stringfield, followed by Stephen Honeycutt.
All right. Good evening. My name is Cameron Alexandria Stringfield. I believe I live in Ward Seven. I'm a member of the Organization Movement for People's Democracy, and I am one of the many Eugene citizens to rally in defense of the Palestinian people who are facing a genocidal assault by the Israeli military. I've been at the October twenty-first Free Palestine demonstration outside of the federal building, where hundreds of people rallied and marched in your streets calling for action. I've also been attending weekly demonstrations outside the old federal building, continuing the solidarity with the Palestinian people, even as many are trying to move on and stop talking about it. There are plenty of people in Eugene, including Palestinian Americans, Jewish and Muslim people, people young and old, are all thoroughly disgusted by what is being carried out in Gaza. I would hope the city council members feel the same way. While only about fourteen hundred Israelis died in the October seventh attack, over eleven thousand Palestinians have been murdered by Israeli forces since then, and the number continues to rise all the time. Over sixty-eight percent of the population of the Gaza Strip has been displaced. Israel is recklessly targeting hospitals, refugee camps, UNRWA facilities, churches and mosques, claiming each time that Hamas was there to cover up their war crimes against unarmed civilians. This is called collective punishment and it is a war crime. Palestine has no formal military. They have no tanks, no jets, no navy. They are being hammered by Israel with the most advanced weaponry in all of history. This also has the potential to spiral out of control and become a wider regional war, if not a global war. Nuclear catastrophe will not be good of the people of, or not be good for the people of Eugene, I can assure you. We need our elected representatives to stand with the Palestinian people and join cities such as Cudahy, California, and Providence, Rhode Island, and adopting a resolution standing with the Palestinian people against apartheid, ethnic cleansing, and occupation, and endorsing the Ceasefire Now Resolution submitted by US Representative Cori Bush, calling for a humanitarian ceasefire and a delivery of humanitarian aid to Gaza. As far as I am aware, no city in Oregon has passed a resolution such as this, and you can set a precedent that cities across Oregon follow. History is watching you, and so are the people of Eugene. Make the right decision. Free Palestine.
Thank you, Cameron. Our next speaker is Stephen Honeycutt, followed by Louis Christopher.
Steve Honeycutt, Ward Five. Sports Bond Measure. I agree with this. It needs to be done. This city is a sports town. And what we've heard today on Hot Topics, people need a break from it. What is interesting about this bond measure, it actually started with the need for M Stadium. And during one of the previous meetings, public meetings, pickleball was brought up as being important, and it is. So what I'm saying is, as a return on investment, this bond is actually helping Lane County, because the stadium actually is a Lane County problem. We're now having a teamwork between the city and the county to address this one issue of the stadium, but also we're looking at the needs of other people in in the sports area, pickleball, which has grown tremendously. And then you've got the complex out there that has been discussed. And that's what I'm saying and wanting to see happen, because now what I'm seeing is we've got the county and we've got the city working together. And this bond measure put before the people as a vote, since it is going to be taxpayers' money, they should have the right to say how their money is going to be spent. I thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Our next speaker is Louis Christopher, followed by Alan McWayne.
Good evening. I'm Louis Christopher. People know me as Jamie. I'm a veteran and Native American, so thank you for the kind words and actions that you took at the beginning of the meeting. I'm also currently the president of Willamette Valley Babe Ruth, former president of the Boys and Girls Club of Emerald Valley. I don't speak on behalf of those organizations here tonight, but I do think I have an understanding of the needs for facilities and the benefit that they bring to the community. I'm here to support the sports bond. Everyone here obviously cares about our community. We have different perspectives on things, but we can look at the fairground and realize that it needs to be revitalized. From what I've read, what I understand, the group that supports the Emeralds has raised significant funds already. They've raised it through their private ownership, through government action and financing. There's a little bit that needs to come ahead, but I also understand that if they do not succeed in that project, that money goes away. There's no plan to move forward with that revitalization. It's a big ask for the community. Anytime you ask for money in a small city like this, but I think the payoff is without measure. I've been fortunate enough to be involved with youth sports for over a decade as a consumer and a provider of, and we need more fields. Two years ago, we had three hundred and sixty games rained out, and we were unable to complete our season because of that lack of fields. The the issues with artificial turf, I really hope that you guys look at peer-reviewed data and research with regard to that and make your decisions based on science, because it's out there, and make the best decision for the community. But I think that, you know, you look at the high school problems that we have, there aren't enough fields for high schools. That's why, one of the reasons why the Springfield Jifters came into existence. They've alleviated some of the need for facilities with Hamlin, but we need more. From a non-baseball perspective, the Emeralds have given so much support to this community. We are about to shutter the Boys and Girls Club, and they came through. Without them, there'd be no Boys and Girls Club. If you ask any charitable organization in this community, most businesses in this community, they will undoubtedly say the Emeralds have been there for them in the past. During the pandemic and the fire season, I worked side by side with Emeralds employees, handing food, water, and shelter to people. They stepped up without cameras, without recognition, and did their best for our community. Let's be there for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Our next speaker is Alan McWayne, followed by Charlie Rojas.
Good evening, Mayor Vines, councilors, and manager Midary. Alan McWayne, JWN, Ward One. As you consider this bond measure coming up in May twenty twenty four, let me ask if the M's Stadium is a good idea. The county board put this on pause because the money was just not there. Originally forty million dollars, the stadium would now cost over a hundred five million dollars, increasing three hundred thousand dollars a month. The state has rejected a seven billion dollar request. The feds have declined a one million dollar grant. The large conglomerate of the parent company of the M's will not contribute any construction costs. Economists say publicly funded stadiums are a bad investment. Forty minor league ballparks are now vacant and abandoned across the country. Communities like Flagstaff, Arizona, have recently rejected such public stadiums. The LEC Draft Master Plan ranks this stadium down at number seven of eight proposals and does not recommend it for the following reasons. It's too large for the fairground campus, and it's in the wrong location there. It would require demolition of the indoor arena without funds for replacement. It would detract from existing events like the county fair and the logging show. And it would lose over two hundred thousand dollars a year requiring subsidies. Again, that is all in the master plan. The county is proceeding with this hundred million dollar project without a completed master plan or public input. Visitors don't come here for baseball games, yet they would fund the proposed thirty-five million dollar county revenue bond, even if they're at the coast off-season. Your councilors have said that this M's proposal is just too casual and ask. Councilor Clark said that he thought the figures were too tall. I agree. I wonder why the stadium is bundled with two other facilities if only one percent of the residents attend M's games? And I see I'm running out of time. As you consider the bond, let me ask, do you think this stadium is a really good idea?
Thank you, Alan. Our next speaker is Charlie Rojas, followed by Linda Kelly.
Charlie Rojas, Ward Seven. Last month, E-Web engaged in a PR blitz regarding increasing water rates prompted by a need for infrastructure investment. This comes in the wake of Oregon Court of Appeals reversing your banning Eugene's middle housing amendment, in which the court stated neither you nor Eugene staff properly planned for increased need for infrastructure. Are you going to address this issue? Have you consulted with E-Web regarding any plans for possible massive increase in water bills? Why do I say massive? Because of what is occurring in California, specifically Orange County, where several cities went along with the state's dense housing mandates, also without proper budgeting for increased need for sewer pipes nor waste treatment. Many residents are seeing their water bills explode at a time of increasing poverty and decreasing property values. I'm signing from an independent investigative journal, The Voice of OC, edited by Norberto Santana, Jr. It's an outstanding example of enterprise reporting, almost as good as Eugene and Lane County's whole community news, edited by John Murray. In the June six, two twenty twenty-three Voice of OC report, the city San Juan Capistrano proposed a twelve hundred percent water bill increase to be levied against businesses in that city. San Juan Capistrano is building California mandated state housing, and it appears they failed to budget increased water and sewage infrastructure. In an October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three Voice of OC report, some South Orange County residents are realizing their water bills are going to at least double, again because the political administrative apparatuses failed to do their jobs and did not accomplish basic infrastructure planning for their dense housing schemes, and are now forcing residents to endure massive tax rate hikes. Not only, not all Orange County cities are going along with being forced to build apartments in which they receive no financial help from either the city, from the state of California, or the federal government. Huntington Beach has said no in large measure, because it would be a massive financial burden for their residents. As it is, Huntington Beach has periodic raw sewage overflows and heavy rains that foul their beaches and turn parts of their ocean into an open sewer. They've got an ocean, we got a river. They have seen the future of what dense housing will do for cities, one that burdens the poorest of their residents, many of them people of color and the elderly, living on a fixed income. Given the levels of hand-waving, smoke-blowing virtue invocation that this city council and elements of the city bureaucracy have engaged in the last few years, you should be demanding E-Web refrain from instituting water bills increases that would impact people who you claim are important to you. When are we going to see you do that? Maybe in two weeks, I hope.
Thank you, Charlie. Our next speaker is Linda Kelly, followed by Dawn Hetty.
Lee Mayor and City Council and Sarah Midary, City Manager. I just want to jump in and reiterate, as you can see from my T-shirt, I would like to see no more gas stations built in Eugene. The truth is, we will be moving into a more electric future. It seems like it's slow-moving, but we will be going there. What I'd like to see, and I'm not sure what the mechanisms are for this, is to require some fast chargers in the existing gas stations. I'm not sure how that would happen or how you can do it, but friends of mine came to visit recently. We had to drive over to the mall in Springfield to get a fast charger for their car. So I just encourage you, for whatever leverage you may have, to please see if that's possible. Let's get some more fast chargers into our gas stations. And see this, I have a little more time. I was very disappointed to see the gas station go up on the corner of Seventh and Polk. You know, what, two blocks or three blocks from the gas station that's already there? I just thought that would have been a wonderful location for some affordable housing, right on the EMX. And I would love to see that kind of thing happen in those corridors instead of more gas stations. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speaker is Dawn Hetty, followed by Debbie McGee.
Good evening. Dawn Hetty, Ward Seven. Council, mayor, staff, friends. Tonight's comments are going to center around last week's and this week's work session. But first, I'd really like to say this. History doesn't repeat itself. It just rhymes. That's Mark Twain. And I stand for the truth. I know what I studied in college, and I know what happened a century ago. And I know about the influence of the Ku Klux Klan in this state and this county. And I just need to say that tonight after listening to repeated repeated nonsense. Regarding Wednesday, be visionary with the Riverfront Urban Renewal Project. You've heard me talk a lot about that. And I'll return to your second agenda item in a moment. Last week, you discussed parking problems and then measure one ten reform, and these kind of all kind of dovetail. Thank you, Councilor Zelenka. A hundred dollar fine for somebody that can't pay it because they're mentally ill and they're living in their van on the corner of Sixth and Madison. Doesn't fix anything. They need help. We don't talk about help anymore. They need help. Okay? And it's a problem. I go by this all the time, and I live in the Whittaker, Ward Seven. And by the way, there's no camping at Washington Jefferson Street Park. That's a jewel again. I love it. I go through there every day. Every day. So boy, gonna wrap this up quick. Guess what? You talked all about one ten, and then I opened the register guard up, and we got a problem with sponsors in Lane County. A roll in probation. They got a five million dollar budget, and it all fits together, folks. We need help, and we got nothing but holes in Lane County scrambling. They came up with five of the ten IGR. We got a short session coming up. That's what we need to concentrate on right there. Everything. Support sponsors. Save our community. I'm out of time. Doggone it. I'll see you guys again.
Thank you, Dawn. Our next speaker is Debbie McGee, followed by Lynn Woodrich.
Good evening. I'm Debbie McGee. I want to congratulate Councilor Leach. We need your leadership in Eugene and appreciation to the Ward Seven voters. I appreciate you listening to all of us tonight. I'm here as usual to speak about the overarching issues that are heating up our tissues, the climate catastrophe. We are speeding toward a ten thousand foot cliff drop-off. The consequences that result as our biological life support system, our habitat collapses, are not consequences that we should leave to our children. It's not fair. So we have to change. If we want a different future, we have to change. Species extinction, deaths from air pollution, fights over water beginning, weather weirding all over the world destroying lives and communities. We know what the solutions are. Clean energy, electrify everything, active transportation, end fossil fuels. Leave old and mature trees in the ground, protect wilderness and watersheds, undam the rivers, reduce, reduce, reduce consumption of everything, and fairly distribute resources necessary to make a dignified life for everyone. Share stuff. Change in the right direction, our codes for parking to influence the convenience of driving cars to encourage public and active transportation. Change in the right direction is to not continue the infrastructure of burning dangerous climate and human-harming fossil fuels when we need to stop burning fossil fuels, so no more gas stations. In September, there was a climate march in New York City. It featured the leadership of BIPOC communities and of youth. We know it's important to listen to the youth, and I want to share the chorus from a high school band. It was three kids. We want you to panic. We want you to act. You've stolen our future, and we want it back. Of course, we're angry. Of course, we're sad. You've stolen our future, and we want it back. We want you to panic. We want you to act. For the sake of our kids' future, let's act like the emergency that it really is, and let's slow down the heating and prevent more destruction of our shared habitat. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Debbie. Our next speaker is Lynn Woodrich, followed by Maya Lazaro. Okay, Lynn, I have allowed you to speak. Please go ahead.
My name is Lynn Woodrich. I'm the Active Bethel Community Co-Chair. I've lived in the Bethel area over twenty-five years. I live in Ward Eight. I'm speaking for the Active Bethel Community Board. The Golden Gardens Sports Complex will be discussed at your upcoming work session on Wednesday. The three options listed in your packet all have the plastic artificial turf specified and no mention of the five hundred foot buffer to protect the turtles. Please include natural turf management and the five hundred foot buffer if you approve this bond measure. We sent you a letter on September eighth, twenty twenty-three, and I emailed it to you again today. In this letter, we wrote, "The Bethel community has major concerns about the proposed buffer zones and potential use of plastic artificial turf at the future sports complex at Golden Gardens Park. The community has concerns that the buffer zones at the site won't meet the minimum recommendations by Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife that call for at least a five hundred foot buffer around turtle habitat for minor infrastructure like picnic tables and one thousand six hundred fifty foot for major infrastructure like roads. The current draft proposals for the park include a buffer of just two hundred feet to the east and north of the ponds, with a larger buffer of five hundred foot only around the west bank of the ponds with the actively managed turtle nesting area. The city should follow the ODFW Best Practices for Turtle Management, which the city of Eugene helped develop and is also recommended by the Biohabitats Report, and ensure there is at least a five hundred foot buffer around the ponds for any new development. The community is also extremely concerned about the risk of microplastics from plastic artificial turf running into the ponds affecting the natural environment at the ponds, entering the long Tom and Willamette River watersheds, and being ingested by people who catch and eat fish from the ponds. The ODFW Best Management Practices for Turtles suggests limiting runoff for chemicals. Stopping microplastics from astroturf entering the ponds would help address this goal. Protecting water quality and endangered species is just, if not more important, than having twelve months of access to plastic turf. And thank you again for moving neighborhood planning ahead for Bethel. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next speaker is Maya Lazaro, followed by Rudy Hess. Maya, you now have permission to speak.
Wonderful. Thank you. My name is Maya Lazaro. I'm a member of the Active Bethel Community Neighborhood Association, and I live in Ward Six. When my husband and I moved to Bethel from the Amazon neighborhood last June, we wanted to get to know our new community. One of our first outings here took us to Golden Gardens Park. We enjoy hiking and taking nature walks together, like many Eugenians, and we're excited to learn that Bethel had its own wildlife habitat just a five-minute drive from our home. Hardly ten minutes into our walk, we were delighted to spot multiple western pond turtles. The park also revealed a heron, numerous species of ducks, geese, and evidence of owls. Along the way, we encountered friendly bicyclists, bird watchers, and fellow walkers who graciously shared the paths. Notably, we didn't see any trash or human refuse. It was evident that people really cared about this place. In that moment, we knew that Golden Gardens was special, not just to Bethel and the larger Eugene community, but also to the native animal and plant species that called the park home. The proposal to turn a portion of Golden Gardens Park into an outdoor sports complex must be balanced with the right to a healthy environment. That right belongs to all our neighbors, human and animals alike, with whom we share our community. That right belongs to all our neighbors, human and animals alike, with whom we share our community. The introduction of artificial turf to Golden Gardens threatens protected species like the Western Pond Turtle. I implore the city, uh, council to reject the use of artificial turf in the proposed sports complex and to establish a five-hundred-foot buffer to safeguard wildlife, a viewpoint supported by Beyond Toxics. We cannot compromise the health of our, of our vibrant natural areas when reasonable alternatives exist. Wildlife spotting is a valid form of recreation, too, and a major draw to the park. I hope you'll consider the long-term health of Golden Gardens as a recreation site by protecting the wildlife that makes it such a wonderful place to visit. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Maya. Our next speaker is Rudy Hess, followed by Andy, followed by Andy Zemedy. Okay, Rudy.
All right. Um, thank you. My name is Rudy Hess. Am I coming in loud and clear?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, sorry, my name is Rudy Hess. I'm paraplegic, not quite quadriplegic, but still, I'm in a wheelchair, and I very much value the sidewalk infrastructure that is here in the city. Um, sorry for my speech impediment. I do my best to go and be the same as everyone else, and I have to use my wheelchair to go and traverse across the city, whether I'm going across Main Street, Second Street, West Street. I am an independent person. I don't have a caretaker that takes care of me. I take care of myself. And one thing I would like to say is, we should really, really, really improve the sidewalk infrastructure that is here in our city, because it's really bumpy. It's really hard for me to get around sometimes when I'm not going around major arteries in the city, major, you know, routes. I say arteries as in, I don't know the word, but you know what I mean? The main route throughout the city for somebody like me. And I try so hard to get around the city, and I'm doing my best to be a normal citizen, and I am a normal citizen. I'm the same as you. I'm the same as an able-bodied, two-person walking person, and I enjoy that. And I, what I really enjoy in our city is all these trees in our subcommittees and our sub-communes and everything like that. I love all these trees. They just, they're just placed in the perfect locations for us to hang up these ropes, to hang up these niggers and these fucking kikes. And it's just for-